Everyone, please rise. I'd like to call to order the Doylestown Borough Council meeting for Monday, August 21st. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One possibility is diamond nation on River Road in Flemington, about 21 miles to you.
Sorry about that. We have the volume.
Sorry, we moved the flag and we forgot to tell you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any special presentations. Do we? Okay. Mayor's report?
I don't have a report, just an announcement that the DART system launched their DART South schedule today. And it goes from Grundy Hall and hits all the key shopping areas going south on 611 and ends up at Park at Westminster Apartments at Valley Road Bus Stop Shelter. So everyone is very excited about it. And the press conference and ribbon cutting is on Thursday at 11 o'clock at Valley Square. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize, I skipped over the approval of minutes from our July 17th council meeting. Do I have any motion to approve those?
So move.
Wendy, thank you. Any questions or comments from anybody?
Yes, second, Jay.
I have an edit.
Wait a minute, we need a second. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, Amy, you had a question?
Oh, Dennis said they already corrected this, but it said also present was Mayor Noni West, but she wasn't.
Yeah, those were corrected. Those are in the drop box right now.
They're not. I read the, before the adjustment.
Any other questions or comments from members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote?
There is one. Oh, sorry, she doesn't come.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, motion carries. Public safety, Mr. Frederick, what do you have for us tonight?
I don't have anything tonight. The only thing we have, it's in your packet, is the fire company report. Everyone has it in their packet, and that is the end of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Public Works Administration, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, we've got a couple items tonight. The first one is the Masonic Lodge Use Agreement. Attached, please find the above referenced agreement. The agreement provides for the installation of a public bench through the borough's legacy bench program on the property of Doylestown Masonic Lodge. It is required because the bench cannot be suitably located in the public right of way. The Public Works and Administration Committee has reviewed the agreement and is recommending approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second. We have a second for Mr. Frederick. Do we have any questions or comments from any members of council? I had one. In there, they talk about a 10-year term and then it can be renewed. I assume that renewal would continue on 10-year increments?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, the second one is an important one. It's the annual 2023-2024 fuel bid. Bids were publicly opened and read on June 14th, 2023 by the Bucks County Consortium for the purchase of fuel for the 23-24 season. The borough uses about 28,000 gallons of unleaded, including the Central Bucks Regional Police Department, and approximately 10,000 gallons of diesel. The low bidder for the majority of fuel used, which is unleaded, was Riggins at a June 14th, 23 net spot price of $2.80 a gallon, the floating meter modifier. The bids are as follows: unleaded Riggins for the purchase of approximately 28,000 gallons of delivered unleaded regular gasoline at a floating price as of the delivery date based on the OPIS Philadelphia Mean Price, $2.62 as of 6/14/23, plus a modifier of 18.9 cents per gallon for the period of August 1st, 2023 to July 31st, 2024. For diesel, Riggins for the purchase of approximately 10,000 gallons of delivered ultra-low sulfur diesel at a floating price as of the delivery date based on the OPIS Philadelphia Mean Price, $2.43 as of 6/14/23, plus a modifier of .329 cents per gallon for the period of August 1st, 2023 to July 31st, 2024. The Public Works Committee reviewed the bids and recommended council to make a motion to award Riggins Incorporated, conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond and compliance with the bid specifications. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a second. Who is that?
Wendy.
Wendy, thank you. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
I just want to express appreciation for staff for acquiring an electric vehicle for the borough, and I look forward to more.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments for any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last order is the monthly Public Works Report, which I'll pass over to Mr. Allinger.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Your monthly Public Works Activity Report, as well as fleet vehicle maintenance reports, are in your packet. This last month, we completed our second round of road paving by the Public Works Department, paving Gulfview Drive, which took 240 tons of asphalt. Spruce Street, which took over 300 tons, and we did a section of Church Street, which about 40 tons. So it was a successful second round of paving, and we're, our forces are working on completing the lovely playground across the street, which we anticipate will have the rubber surfacing down within the next 30 days and should be hopefully open for play and joy and activity by the end of September. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Community and Government Affairs, Mr. Bell, you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Government Affairs did meet. We have nothing for council action. I just want to thank the staff. I'm looking at the live stream and appreciate making use of these great facilities. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Zoning and Planning, Ms. Jarrett, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, we do. So from the Building and Zoning Department, we have a consideration for an ordinance to adding lighting regulations to the subdivision and land development ordinance. It is ordinance 2023-10. Attached, please find the above referenced draft subdivision and land development ordinance amendment regulating outdoor lighting. The ordinance controls light pollution, including glare, light trespass, and skyglow. The ordinance has been properly advertised, and the zoning planning committee recommends adoption of ordinance 2023-10. And if council is in agreement with the recommendation, it may do so by motion.
And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Margolis and a second by Ms. Jarrett. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have the zoning, sorry, zoning hearing board report, which I will toss over to Ms. Highland.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Zoning Hearing Board met last week to hear two applications. The first was for 61 Pine Street. It was a dimensional variance request to enable the applicant to convert a first-floor office into a second dwelling unit. The second application was for 71 North Broad Street, also a dimensional variance request to allow a swimming pool within the required rear yard setback. Both applications were approved by the zoning hearing board.
Thank you. Next, we have the Harb report, the Harb recommendations, excuse me. At its regular monthly meeting, the Borough of Doylestown's Historic and Architectural Review Board, Harb, recommended the following: two sign applications, one for 103 South Main Street for a sign and roof shingles. The Harb recommended approval of the application with the condition that the roof is charcoal or dark gray in color and the sign is not internally lit. Next was 56 South Main Street for a sign, and this was for the Doylestown Historical Society. The Harb recommended approval of the application as submitted. Next, we're building applications. One was 24 Taylor Street for exterior renovations. The Harb recommended approval of the application as submitted with the condition that the side door be a Simpson 37435 wood door and paint colors to be as presented at the Harb meeting. 57 West Ashland Street for a roof. The Harb recommended approval of the application with the condition that the applicant use GAF slate line in place of GAF timber line, HDZ high-definition shingles. Next was 160 East Oakland Avenue for windows. The Harb recommended approval of the application as submitted on the condition that the homeowner include permanently fixed exterior grills and removable interior grills on six of the seven windows visible from Oakland Avenue. Next is 169 North Broad Street for windows, and the Harb recommended approval of the application as submitted. And last, we have 33 South Main Street for an awning. The Harb recommended approval of the application as amended to include a navy awning with a teal bottom and bookend border. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends that council approve the applications in accordance with the Harb's recommendation, and if council wishes to follow the committee's recommendation, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Second. We had a second by, I believe it was Mr. LaRone. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Additionally, we have the code enforcement report and the building inspection report, which are both in the packet for review. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Environment and Rec, Ms. Margolis, do you have anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Environment and Rec Committee did not meet, but I do have something from the EAC. Doylestown Borough's Environmental Advisory Council hopes the local community will help protect migratory birds by participating in Lights Out Doylestown. Residents and businesses are encouraged to turn off or reduce exterior and interior lights that illuminate the outdoors from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. From August through November, millions of birds migrate from Canada and the northern U.S. to warmer locations in the South. The risks that birds face on their exhausting journey includes not only predators and storms, but also artificial lights. Many birds travel in the middle of the night and rely on natural light landmarks to guide them on their path south. Artificial lights can confuse birds, causing them to veer off course and become exhausted before reaching their destination or leading to fatal, where is this? Fatal window crashes. So we, the Environmental Advisory Committee is asking that the public possibly keep the lights off for the migration period. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Margolis. Water Utility, Mr. LaRone, you have anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Water Utility Committee did meet this month, but we have no actionable items for council, so that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. LaRone. Ms. Popkin, Finance and Pension, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items. The first item is the Bucks County Firefighter Credit. And in your packet attached, you will find the information requesting Borough Council's support in asking Bucks County to assist with the shortage of volunteer firefighters in the county by offering the Act 91 Real Estate Tax Credit to residents who are volunteer firefighters. This request would also expand to the Central Bucks School District. The Finance and Pension Committee reviewed the request at their August 10th, 2023 meeting, and we are recommending that Borough Council endorse the request. If council agrees with this recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I do so move.
Second.
We had a second from Ms. Jarrett, I think it was.
That's correct.
Yes. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Popkin. What does expand to the Central Bucks School District mean?
It would mean asking that...
Simple as it sounds?
A credit would apply to school taxes as well, is what it means.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the Finance Report, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Springer.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Everybody was given a copy of the Finance Report. The total for all funds of prepaid bills, accounts payable, and payroll is $1,378,317.72.
Thank you, and I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Margolis.
That's correct.
Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. I do not, the Personnel Committee did not meet this month. I do not have a report. And brings us to the Professionals Report. Mr. Dougherty?
Thank you, I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, Solicitors Report, Andrew?
Thank you, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Central Bucks Regional Police Department Chief Knott, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, no report tonight.
Thank you. I do not have a President's Report tonight, other than to say I had the opportunity to spend 20 minutes walking around at the new playground over there. Even though it's not completed, it is quite impressive. There was still work going, work to be done, as Mr. Allinger said, but I'm looking forward to the opening. And thank you to those who have donated money to help offset the cost of that. That concludes my report.
Mr. President, I have one thing I'd like to go back to, is from our Water Department, if I could, when we're... I know we've all been dealing with PFAS, and we have the new system down here on North Broad Street, but just to bring everybody up to date on a few things. PFAS can be removed from tap water, but according to the EPA, tap water typically only accounts for about 20% of a person's overall exposure to the chemicals. We eat them, we inhale them, we rub them on our skin. Testing by the government agencies and watchdog groups have found PFAS in carpet, furniture, nail polish, shampoo, mascara, non-stick cookware, dental floss, raincoats, fast food wrappers, pizza boxes, microwave, popcorn bags, yoga pants, sanitary, sneakers, sanitary pads, tampons, menstrual cups, bedding, upholstery, children's pajamas, paint, vinyl flooring, and artificial turf. And just one other observation, the PFAS, once they get inside of our cells, they can do a lot of damage to our DNA. Perhaps the most problematic are the ones known to bind to at least 14 receptors in our body. And just to give you something to think about there, dioxin, which was in Agent Orange, by comparison binds to only one. So I know we're doing a good job getting it out of our water, but just to let everybody know, we are, as I said, inhaling it, drinking it, whatever. So it is a forever chemical everywhere and forever. So that's it, thank you.
I think you told me that was in this week's New York Times?
That is in this week's New York Times, and it was written by, I'll give you the names if you want to look it up, by Kim Tingley, T-I-N-G-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
It's a good article, and it's very enlightening.
It's in the magazine.
In the magazine, right, yeah.
Good time to remind the public that we do have a dedicated page on our website, embedded within our website, related to PFAS. You'll find information about the borough situation, including the latest updates on what we're doing to address PFAS. You'll find health-related information, links to various governmental agencies and health agencies, and you'll also find a lot of good information about the regulatory situations that exists, as it is changing practically from day to day at this point. So it's a good resource. Just go on doylstownborough.net and look for the dedicated PFAS page.
Moving on in the agenda, any items of old business to address tonight? Hearing none, any items of new business?
Mr. President, I just have one quick thing.
Yes.
Sam Smith, a borough resident, was the winner of the Ardmore Rock and Ride Criterion Race yesterday in Ardmore, and Sam will be racing at the Doylestown Race coming up next month. He's part of the Bike Works Doylestown L.T.
Okay, thank you. Open public comment. Please come up to the microphone, identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Judy Komisky. I am, live on 105 Steeplechase Drive, Doylestown, Pennsylvania, the bottom of Clinton Avenue. There are 273 houses back there, and I live among them. I've moved here in 1999.
Could you step closer to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sure, I moved here in 1999. My major concern is a hazard, which is on Clinton Avenue, where people get off the bus, people get off the train, they want to come into Doylestown and enjoy our city, and there is spillage on the sidewalk, it's covering half of it. If I want to travel, to go take the train to Philly Airport, I have to walk up the hill next to all of this debris, and sometimes I'm pushed into the street. I don't appreciate that at all. I think it's, not only is it a hazard, but I think it's pretty ugly, and it's not a really good representation of Doylestown. This is one of our hubs, and we have buses coming in from New York City, we have people coming in on the train, and we have people coming in on the bus. So I find this as a hazard. I think it's really, really ugly, and I don't think it's very safe. Nobody cleans the snow up in the winter, you're always pushed into the street, and that is a hazard as well. So there could be plows coming down, you can't walk on the sidewalk. I think it's very dangerous for not only myself, but people who come into our city as well. It, this is, I have no idea what this is, but it's sitting next to a bench, the only bench where you're going to get off or get onto the bus. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, but I have no idea what this is. I find this is a hazard as well.
It once mounted a small trash receptacle?
I have no idea what it does now, and there's no trash can anywhere.
The trash receptacle was removed, so the pole can be removed.
That would be great. This is the only place people have to wait for the bus. There is also another section, there is a covered part. But if you look down the street, this is a dentist, he is fully landscaped, he looks beautiful, and then you come up the street, and what is ours, what should be our representation of Doylestown, is a mess, and it needs to be cleaned up. That's all I have.
Just to address a couple of those things, the property does belong to SEPTA.
Okay.
We'll make sure that we have that high on our list to get on SEPTA if they're not properly clearing their sidewalks and parking areas, number one. We'll certainly get that bus shelter, which is ours. We'll address that condition. That is something we've been maintaining for many years. Wasn't aware that it was, had fallen on hard times, if it has, but we'll make sure that we're out there.
Very good.
More often and take care of that. And not sure what else we can do in terms of landscaping and stuff with SEPTA, but we'll take a look at it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you could put some sort of ground cover that could keep the land from cascading onto the sidewalk.
That's something we could ask them, it really is up to them, but...
That'd be great.
Okay, we'll take a look, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Edward Mackhouse from Buckingham, and I, my first time here, looks good, looks like you're working all professional. I was wondering if there's a code of conduct for behavior outside of the council for members here? So I was concerned with security and safety, and sometimes women could get upset, someone approaches them and puts their finger in their face. Like I was at the Doylestown, I'm in the Bucks County Commissioners Meeting, and I speak there a lot, and people speak, and everyone should speak with public comment, they should be respected. And Lee Blasbaum, who's a member of the Central Bucks School Board, spoke about the sheriff requested eight more sheriffs because of this 8,000 backlog and warrants. And the security situation is that in the last year in Bucks County, there was a 36% increase in youth being incarcerated. So I think we need to have support for the sheriffs. And so I think that we have to look at ways to mental health and ways to improve why the problem is. Some problems come from Philadelphia. I know where the carjacking and other stuff, because they're not prosecuting those people properly. So I think we, and so I think we need to look into how this should be improved. And I was wondering if there's a standard for way council members would approach, like especially if they approach women outside, is there any council regulations about courtesy in approaching women? If you, people don't like to be questioned or criticized, so I don't think it's good to go up and approach someone, stick their fingers in their face. Is there any documentation on the proper procedure for council members outside the council? Or is it just assumed that everyone should be courteous and they treat everyone? I mean, sometimes politics get heated, like Democrats, Republicans. I think we all have to try and find common ground, how to work together. have to work together. So that's my statement here, and I think we, I think this. I'm a physicist. I taught for 10 years. I think this country is in the great danger. There was, I don't know if anyone saw the movie about the creation of the atomic bomb, where they said that there was a very slight chance that it would result in catastrophe, destruction of the world. But at that, Einstein said he doesn't know about the Third World War, but he thinks the Fourth World War would be fought with sticks and stones. So as they're having this conflict, like with China and things, and Russia. I mean, under President Trump, he was able to settle these things. We had the Abraham Accords. Everyone was able to get together. We didn't have this kind of war. But as a physicist, the possibility of a nuclear chain reaction by one nation having a nuclear weapons Iran getting it, getting, pissing us off, the possibility of a nuclear catastrophe is not close to zero anymore. It's getting close to, if you think of, like my system safety analysis, meantime between failure, we look at what is the possibility of a nuclear war and destruction of the nuclear nations, say, in the next 20-year period? I'm almost 80. I have 20 more years. I don't think, I think it could be over 50%. Because if you look at the basic physics, imagine that 100 nations have nuclear weapons, and one nation decides that they haven't been treated properly. And so they decide, I'm going to settle the nuclear weapon. And then you have the thing with Russia and Putin suggesting nuclear weapons. So I think we need to figure out how to get along. And like the President, should not be attacking, like President Trump, and putting him in jail because he questions the election cycle. I think it's one of the reasons to question the last election. And all these January 6 people put in jail. There was, the, there was a woman who's in charge, doctors put in jail, who never lost a person through the COVID. So I never got any COVID vaccine. I'm 79. So according to all this scare, they shut down the schools for two years. I should have been in high risk and got, I've got very minor, no fever with the virus. So I see innocent people lost their jobs. 40 million lost their jobs because of this COVID scare. And the physics, physics is John, I'm a physicist at the PhD level. John Clauser got the Nobel Prize in Physics. He, 2022, he says that this scare about the environmental stuff has caused this country a trillion dollars, that the carbon stuff is a natural process. The cars burn fuel, they create carbon dioxide. The plants take in the carbon dioxide and produce oxygen for us. But all these batteries coming from China, this causes a lot of environmental hazard. And the heat cycle is a natural process. The heat heats up the ocean, and it creates a lot of vapor, creates clouds. So when it gets very hotter, you have more vaporization, and the clouds will reflect the light. So it's a natural cycle. So this false science that they don't want him to speak about, that they're trying to censor him, says the problem is on censorship, it's not on the truth. He's the greatest physicist, and we're the richest country in the world. We should have trillions of dollars of surplus that we could help people make sure everyone has a job. And right now, we're getting trillions of dollars in debt. This is not sustainable. You have $30 trillion in debt, and any reasonable interest rate, we're spending over $400 million just on interest we're borrowing, where we should be paying down our debt. So there's gross mismanagement, and I think the Republicans and Democrats need to get together and get the real science. And also the hazards. Why is there so much problems in crime? Walter Hyer, he has sexchangeregret.com. He has, he was eight years. He made himself like, he was indoctrinated. He came like he was a woman. But he concluded it's, when child abuse, we have this abuse of children that results in later on that they want to do sex change and stuff. But there's never been a successful sex change, and they cannot change the sex of anyone. All you can do is change the way people work and...
Can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
You asked, of everything you've stated, I really think there's only one thing that we, as the council for Doylestown Borough, can respond to. And that question is, do we have a, excuse me, any guidelines for rules of conduct outside here? I'm not sure of the answer to that, but we will find out for you and get that back to you. So thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you for listening so politely. And I think, you know what the definition of war is? By Claude Wood's, the definition of war is it's a continuation of politics by other means. So we have to find ways of communicating better and getting along so we don't go to war and more fighting and catastrophe. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drop the button.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Anybody else? Public comment? Come on up.
Hello. Vana Diarmun, Plumstead Township. It sounds like maybe my question's already been asked. My question is, does the borough have a code of conduct for council members and members of committees and volunteer boards? And if so, where can I find these? If not, why not? What redress does a citizen have if a council member uses abusive and intimidating language and behaviors? Recently, the HRC, the Human Relations Council, hosted an anti-bullying program, which was very good. I attended it. They talked about name-calling, attacking people, and how damaging that was, among other things. It was pretty comprehensive. I would like to know what the council is doing to prevent its own members from violating these anti-bullying tenements. As I look up at the board and I think about, you know, I only heard a bit of what Ed said, but talking about being able to have civil discourse and conversation with each other and having diversity of thought. I wonder how much diversity of thought I see up here, okay? Because there isn't, when we look at, when we just look at politics, you're all of one party. Now, when I lived in the borough before, we had some Republicans on the board. And I do, I do, I bring this up because I wonder how much that has, that affects, you know, some of these things. There is this big push about the hate has no home here. And I always, I thought, you know, that's a good thing. I agree. Hate has no home here. What does that mean? Well, are you allowed to hate people for their diversity of thought, their diversity of opinion? Or is it truly hate has no home here? So I had a recent issue with one of the council members that I may bring up at another time. I'm not going to tonight because I want to wait for your answer and see what other redresses I have. But I did go to the Human Relations Council, and it was deemed not to fall within the scope of the legal requirements or whatever it is. So I am coming to you, to before you because I don't want to let this go because I was a victim. And then I witnessed another woman be a victim. Happened right in front of me. Shouldn't have happened. Then I have found out there are other women victims. This is a pattern of behavior, and it needs to stop. And I hope that there can be some kind of remediation, some kind of public apology. There needs to be some action here, and you need to stand behind that thought that hate has no home here. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any otherbody care to make any public comment tonight? Hearing none. Are we going to have an executive session?
We do have an executive session, a Personnel Executive Session.
Personnel Executive Session. Do we expect any action coming out of that?
We do not.
There will be no action coming out of that, so we will adjourn to our deliberation room here. And I think we will adjourn the meeting here because there will be no action, correct?
Can we adjourn now? Yes.
Yes. Okay. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Jarrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming tonight.